Jerry, if you would note that Commissioners Lenders and Bill are not here today. And Commissioner Troutman from the County Board is representing the County Board today. For the audience, if you don't have Agenda, if you haven't picked it up, and the bookshelf in the back is copies of the Agenda for the day. And if you have cellphones, please make sure they're in quiet mode. Approval of the March 9th, 2015 minutes. Minutes are published in our packet. County Commissioner Ferby contacted me. George, did you want to get up and?
My name is George Ferby. And last meeting, it was item number 12 on the Agenda. And that item says that the item was called a question. And we learned this past week that the County Commission meeting in Pierre, which I had thought all along as calling a question, is inappropriate motion, inappropriate action. So I'd like for the minutes to either have that item removed, or, as I suggested last meeting, should be recorded that I objected to that action. Thank you very much.
George, I guess after I spoke with you, I did look at Robert's Rules of Order. And you're right, that's more of a colloquialism, but it's referenced as a colloquialism in Robert's Rules of Order. But you're correct, it should be called a previous question is the correct terminology. And you are also correct, I guess it does say that while someone is speaking, you can't call the question, you have to wait till the speaker quits. And you did object to that, and I do appreciate that.
And that's the more important issue, is that when someone has the floor, and that's something going forward, Pennington County is going to have to decide. And I can go either way. Either we follow Robert's Rules as printed, with the exceptions that we acknowledged on January 6th, or we can add to this as an objection, or an exception to the rules. In the meantime, we've adopted the rules, so we should abide by them. And when someone has the floor, they shouldn't interrupt. Except in cases like point of order, that's probably the most common one, adjournment, you can override, interrupt any time to adjourn the meeting. That is in Robert's Rules very clearly. There are a few exceptions where you can interrupt. But basically, when you have the floor, there should be no interruptions. Thank you much.
And I do agree, since you specifically asked that be in the record, it should be. But Jerry did check with the Auditor's Office. And basically, what we're doing now, we had approved, is do what the County Commission is doing, just the motions. And then there is the videotape that's available to review in detail. But I also understand, since you specifically requested that be in the record, it should be.
You can go either way, as long as it's equal. And I should applaud this Commission for doing as the Board has, and only have motions. Because we have motions, resolutions, and bills. You don't want to have those. But that avoids the bias. Anytime you start reporting minutes, it's human nature to be on one side or the other. It's almost impossible to stay totally neutral. So the best way to avoid that is not have any kind of editorializing in the minutes.
Anyway, appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Thank you.
Yep, thank you much.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Lauren.
One of the things I noted is that when someone does have the floor, that the chair can apply an appropriate time. And I know sometimes we do that.
Yeah.
You know, you remind people that when you get up, you know, we have a lot of people, we're going to limit your time to that. That would be an appropriate time to interrupt someone, right?
And...
To remind them that, you know, hey, you've been up there 10 minutes or whatever.
Correct. The chair should be doing that.
The chair would do that, yeah.
And you're right, we've kind of done that only on special occasions. I was actually going to bring that up in items for membership today, is whether we should adopt, you know, five-minute rule per speaker. Basically, like the County Board is. I've watched some of the videotapes, and I think that's, you know, controlled, equal sides to the argument, and things like that. So anyway, maybe we need to be more formal. I think we've been informal on a lot of that. I don't know. I guess we'll have to have a discussion on that. Anyway, back to the minutes, I guess with that, adding that information on George's objection on item 12, are there any other corrections, additions, deletions? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes with that correction of item 12.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the Agenda. When we approve the Agenda, it's with the consent items as on the published Agenda. And so it's, those will get approved unless someone from the audience or the Planning Commission pulls those items. Currently, today, the consent items are three through 11. First, we'll go to staff to see if staff is pulling any of the items.
On consent calendar, we like item nine pulled.
Any others?
On the regular agenda, if we could just flip-flop 12 and 13 for staffing purposes upstairs. We'd just like to change those, so 13's heard before 12.
Any other items?
Not from staff.
Other items from the Planning Commission to pull from the Agenda? Items three through 11, again, are on the consent, except for item nine, has been pulled now.
Mr. Chair, point of order. We accepted the Agenda and really aren't 12 and 13 a regular part of the Agenda. So we should reconsider and switch those.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
But if we're going to be more formal, then maybe we should do that.
We haven't accepted Agenda yet.
Oh, I thought we voted to accept the Agenda.
No, not yet. Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we voted on the minutes.
Okay. I thought we were considering the consent Agenda. Okay.
Anyway, yeah, we're considering the regular Agenda with the consent items. And now I'm requesting items to be pulled.
Okay.
We've pulled nine already. Any others from the Planning Commission to be pulled? And PJ, then, if you'd read three through eight, and nine and 10 for the record, before we go to the audience for pulling items.
Sure.
Pardon me?
Nine and 11. He pulled nine.
Yeah, I said three through eight, and 10 and 11. I skipped nine.
Oh, I thought you said nine. Sorry.
Anyway.
Okay. Planning Commission consent Agenda for today consists of the following. Item three, conditional use permit review, 1102, for Jeff and Cheryl Devaney, to review an internally illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district dwelling unit in Highway Service District. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CUP 1102 with 10 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review, 1403, Homquest Incorporated, Mike Harmon is the agent, to review storage units to be located on the subject property in a Highway Service District. Staff recommends this be continued for, that CUP 1403 be continued until the April 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item five, Plan Unit Development Review, 0607, Rapid City MHP LLC, for Simran Mobile Home Park, to review a Plan Unit Development to allow a mobile home park. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Plan Unit Development 0607 with 20 conditions. Item six, road name Lumberjack Lane, for Bill Baker, to name a 66-foot wide access easement providing access to properties. Staff recommends approval of the road name of Lumberjack Lane. Item seven, vacation and relocation of easement, 1502, for Ryan and Kristy McFarland, to vacate and relocate a portion of a minor drainage and utility easement along the west property line to bring the single-family residents into compliance. Staff recommends approval of the vacation and relocation of easement, 1502, with two conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review, 1503, for bituminous paving. Bill Krakowski is the agent, to allow a portable asphalt batch plant to be set up in the Pete Lean and Sons gravel pit in the General Agriculture District. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 1503, with 13 conditions. Item 10, vacation of plat, 1402, Sugar Land LLC, to vacate that parts of Lot 10, 11, and 12, located in Pennington County, of Pathfinder 1 subdivision in the low residential district. Staff recommends approval of vacation plat, 1402, with three conditions. Item 11, preliminary plat, 1504, and subdivision regulation variance, 1502, for Robert Drew Mills Family Limited Partnership, to create track Dean and track Drew of HES number 303, and to waive platinum requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance, 1502, and approval of preliminary plat, 1504, with six conditions.
Is there anyone in the audience that like any of the items three through eight and 10, 11 pulled, as read into the record? Commissioner Ferby? Number five, if you pulled? So right now, our Agenda is items three through, three and four, six through eight, 10 and 11, and then we're moving 13, flipping 13 and 12. Is there any other items to be pulled from the Agenda? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the agendas I just listed.
So moved. Second.
Motion second for approval of Agenda and consent items. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Go to item five.
Good morning. Kelsey Roush, Pennington County Planning Department. Item five is for a planning development review, 0607. Does George have any questions? Or?
Yes, as we talked last night, I'd like for you folks to do our work for us. The number of four, condition, the mobile home shall have a minimum of 20-foot separation. As I recall, a year or two ago, that was an issue before the Board. You know, the 20 feet is between mobile homes or between any add-ons to the mobile homes. Do you recall that, Commissioner Troutman? It was a discussion that I'd like for you folks to do the homework for us, to see what the 20 feet's measured from.
And I guess clarification from staff probably would be good. I know, I think in Rapid Valley, we had that one where we didn't include measurements from the porch or the deck.
I think it's where historically have used living space. So if they do want to add on, it has to be, this still has to meet the 20-foot setback between lots.
Add on what, though?
Well, if it's a covered porch, that's not considered living space. If it's a bedroom or a living room inside square footage, then it would be living space.
And item five below, is that why decks and porches are listed separately?
Yes.
So those are not included in the 20-foot?
Correct.
Probably should get a clarification then, I guess.
Yeah, we can add on to that, condition number four, and state living space if we want to.
And the guiding rules should be modified or reflect that, that 20 feet is, or whatever that 20 feet is.
I don't disagree. We've had that comment several times, so.
And that's the reason, the second reason was it says the decks and/or porches be allowed as accessory structures to each mobile home. Seems to me that should be with permits. Even though I disagree with permits, I think the ordinance says we have to have permits for decks.
They are required. Permits are required.
So that should be, if you say it without putting permits, then someone can read this and say, this allows...
Yep, we can add that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Kelsey, would you mind restating what you would propose as a modified?
Okay, number four. Mobile homes shall have a minimum 20-foot separation between, we could do between mobile home, living quarters, living space somehow. I don't, it's up to you.
I would, I guess, to me, it ties in right, with number five excluding decks and covered porches.
Number five, we could do decks and/or porches be allowed with a building permit as accessory structures.
Staff's recommendation is for approval with 20 conditions and modifying conditions four and five, as we just indicated. Any, entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Jim?
You know, I think potentially, we do have to kind of look at this. I mean, that, one could build a deck right up next to the neighboring property or structure, sort of like in the forest with the tree limbs, you know, interconnecting. And, you know, the base of the tree might be 30 feet apart, but lo and behold, there's a distinct hazard there. I know that in some of those situations that we've looked at, it would be virtually impossible to enforce this, or to change this process. I mean, some of those lots are so tight that, but I think that's a distinct hazard. And I wonder if we shouldn't look at that a little more carefully. We might define it as enclosed space, or year-round, or something like that, that would distinguish it from, if we continue to do it the way we're doing it. But I think that's a distinct hazard. I really do. I think it ought to be looked at some way. But not at the moment, I don't know quite what.
Lauren?
Because what I recall from our last discussion, there was an issue about a carport. And it was an aluminum carport, and we talked about, you know, wood structures being more of a fire hazard or something like that. So that was what I recalled, that issue was on that other one.
Well, I think we've had kind of several issues. I think even on Tubers, the overhanging roof, we were counting that as square footage, and it kicked it into a different set of regulations. I mean, I think, I think there is some need for clarification in looking at that overall. But I guess, Jim, are you opposing then, moving forward with this?
No, no, I'm not. But I would hope staff would look at that and see if maybe we could come up with some language that would be more precise. And I think George's point is well-taken, that, glad he brought this up, because it is distinctly a potential hazard, I think. So, no, I'm not opposing.
Okay. Further discussion? We have motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item nine.
Item number nine is vacation of easement, 1501, for Brandon and Lindsay Noble, to vacate a 60-foot Forest Service access easement on Lot 67 in Canyon Springs Preserve. Let me see if I can get this presentation to pull up. Currently, Lot 67 of Canyon Springs Preserve is zone plan unit development. Zone plan unit development, it's 1.77 acres. As I said, it's located in Canyon Springs, which means it is located in the Canyon Springs Road District. There is a Canyon Springs Sanitary District out there as well. This lot is currently vacant of any structures. They do plan on building there soon. And there is that 60-foot Forest Service access easement located along the western property line, the interior of the western property line. The applicants are concerned with the space that this 60-foot access easement takes up, and the subsequent building space that it leaves for them. The Forest Service has indicated that they don't have a need for the existing access easement that's there. The county fire coordinator, Denny, he did comment that the only time that he can remember this access easement being used was for a fire, to access a fire there. At one point in time, he said it was used as a trail to access this fire to the south and west of this general area. But the Forest Service in their comments did say that this easement is not granted specifically to them. They did clarify that easements that are granted to the Forest Service are actually granted to the United States of America in the deed books with the Register of Deeds, and they don't have one granted to the United States of America. So this access easement isn't actually granted to the Forest Service. And again, they stated that they don't have a need for this access easement, that there are other access roads where they can access the Forest Service property along the backside of this piece of property. And there is also a locked gate. There you can see the access easement right there. That pile of rocks and dirt and stuff is actually right in the middle of that easement. But it does, this is the rest of that easement. And there is this locked gate here at the end of that easement. And according to the Forest Service, this gate is locked year-round to avoid disturbance to wildlife. They have no plans on opening this gate and allowing access to other people, to citizens of Canyon Springs through this gate. A member of the Canyon Springs Sanitary District did comment that the Canyon Springs Sanitary District is not opposed to the Noble's request. However, he as an individual does not specifically support it. And he does maintain that the easement wasn't granted to the Forest Service, but to the residents of Canyon Springs. And as of this morning, I have received two emails in favor of the vacation of easement. I have also received one email with concern about the vacation of easement, along with the Canyon Springs Sanitary District manager voicing his concern with vacating this easement. And I do believe there is also an audience member who has a concern about it as well.
Question I had is, as far as access, I mean, you're kind of alluding to vehicle traffic, but I mean, the access could be pedestrian traffic to the Forest Service, too.
Correct.
And if you look at that subdivision layout, for a lot of the interior lots, there is no other access to the Forest Service easily. And I guess Denny's comment, that it might have been used as a, I can't remember, as an emergency trail. And I guess that first photo, you had, it barely shows up, but if you go out to Rapid Map, I mean, it does connect to another road. So I mean, if there wasn't, needed a way to get out, that is a way out, also.
And I did ask the Forest Service on Friday to clarify for me, because they did say that there was other access roads where they could access this property. I did ask the Forest Service to clarify that for me. And the Forest Service told me that the closest access point would be on, off the Schroeder Road Trailhead, which Schroeder Road is, I would say that Trailhead is probably at least two or three miles at the very minimum from this location. But they did tell me that that is the access point that he's referring to in his comments.
Well, looking at the terrain, too, there's some pretty steep areas. I don't know, two or three miles is substantial difference when you got trained, that you're fighting also.
Right.
I guess other comments, questions from Planning Commission, before we go to the audience for comment.
Cassie, do you have a map of the whole Canyon Springs Preserve that you can put up?
Um, let me see if I can find one.
I'm just curious if there are, on the outskirts of the subdivision, if there are other places where residents might be able to access?
Sure.
An exit, if they need one.
If I can pull one up here on Rapid Map. Okay, so essentially, this is the entirety of Canyon Springs Preserve.
Do we know if there are any other access easements? I mean, like, there you can see parcel boundaries, but you can't see access easements. Are we aware of there any other pedestrian access easements, or vehicle easements similar to this?
The Forest Service didn't comment that they had any other access easements in there. Whether or not there's other ones, like private ones, things like that, I don't know. But the Forest Service doesn't have any others in there.
I'm kind of curious, I probably don't know without looking, but when this was being developed, was it being advertised as closer, you know, close access to the Forest Service lands? And I mean, if that's only access easement, there are a lot of interior lots that don't have access.
And I think that this one, the reason that the access is on there is because of that gate, that locked gate that's at the southern property boundary there, between the Forest Service and this private piece of property. I think that's why this access easement is there, is specifically because of that gate that allows them. If that gate were to be unlocked, obviously, that would be the prime way to get in there. But the Forest Service has stated that that gate is locked year-round.
But I don't think that's a 60-foot wide gate, I guess. My point is access easement for pedestrian traffic. I mean, there's a lot of places where the Forest Service locks the road, but doesn't prevent the public from entering the Forest Service.
Right. Yeah, I don't know of any other access points within Canyon Springs. The Forest Service just told me that the closest access point that they recognize is off Schroder Road.
Other questions for Cassie, before I go to the audience? Jim?
I'm sort of surprised that the Forest Service is rather blasé about this. They're usually real sticklers for all kinds of detail. I, if they're not concerned about access to that area for fire purposes, perhaps, it seems like maybe some of the landowners might be. This seems, the information seems terribly incomplete to me to, I mean, not that I, I can appreciate the applicant's concern about this huge swath of ground, but it would be nice maybe to have a little more information from the Forest Service, or someone from the subdivision that might be able to clarify this. I'm a little befuddled by it, quite frankly.
Or a thought I had would be to reduce it to 20 feet or something.
Yes, right. I mean, that might be a more sensible thing, a compromise that would provide still access and give the landowners some room. And I think that's probably a wise choice, but we might want to hear more. I don't know.
I believe somebody from, Karen?
Cassie, is there a setback then from the 66-foot wide easement? Is there another setback, another, what is it?
No, there's not, just from the lot line.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one of the things I was curious about is whether they were thinking of building. That would kind of give me a better perspective. So as we move through the questioning, maybe we can figure that out.
I believe there was audience request to pull this, so go to the audience if somebody wishes to speak to this matter. George? Brian?
Can you bring up the map again? Good morning. My name is Brian Vulcan. I live at 13395 Old Orchard Road, and am a property owner in Canyon Springs Preserve. And I'm here as speaking with some concerns and in opposition of vacating this easement. First of all, I want to say that I'm very respectful of my neighbor that wants this easement vacated. And being a good neighbor, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, disrupt their home or anything else. And I'm willing to do anything we can to work with them. However, I do want to talk about the access. First of all, the whole discussion about the Forest Service, whether they have the access or not, or locked gate, you know, it's all irrelevant. This easement was granted to the Canyon Springs Preserve for the specific purpose of access by the people that are going to live in the Canyon Springs Preserve. You vacate that, you're going to take that away from a lot of people. There are other access points all around the Preserve. The Preserve was designed in such a way that it had a lot of common area, most of the areas common that residents out there can use. And it was designed so that we had unfettered access to the Forest Service all the way around. There are a number of spots, if I can, can I run your mouse?
Yes, absolutely.
Just to answer that question. And I've hiked and walked and taken pictures of every one of these. There's access here, this is a common area. There's access right down in here, there's an access point, trying to make sure I get it right, somewhere right in here, back here, there's a common area here. There is access. But the real trouble comes in, this is very, very rough terrain, most of the accesses terminate at a cliff. So you go there, and you look out over the cliff, and you see the vistas. This one particular access easement point was, so... This one particular easement point was, so was portrayed as a selling point when all of us bought our land out there. And in fact, I'm not sure I would have bought a lot out there had I not had that particular access point to the Forest Service. Because what it was going to allow us to do is whether we do it on foot, bicycle, or motorized transportation, whatever the rules allow by the Forest Service and what Canyon Springs puts in place for rules, we knew that we had unfettered access to the Forest Service. This whole area is up on top of a hill. This is really the only plausible good access to the Forest Service and this Forest Service road that goes all the way up to Norris Peak and everywhere else. So if you take that away, you're going to take that away from all these people that live in here is really the only way that has easy access to the Forest Service. Now, I do agree with the idea, maybe we need to cut this down from sixty-foot to twenty-foot, there's no reason we need a sixty-foot easement in there. On the other hand, when I do look at the Forest Service, there is no good way to get to this road right here, and it is more than two miles. And I own property, not this forty acres, but the next forty acres next to it, and this road goes right by my property. And that is still a long way from the Trailhead over on Schroeder Road. So, you know, from a landowner perspective, and I own this lot right here, from a landowner perspective, you know, I'd sure like the Forest Service, if there was a fire, to be able to get in here pretty quickly. And they're not going to be able to any other point. None of these other lots, unless you drive just across the yard, and there are going to be people putting houses right in the middle of these lots. And I would imagine this lot here is probably not going to build along that easement. He's going to build along this edge where all the views are and the ground, the terrain evens out and whatnot. I guess at the end of the day, my basic point is that everybody that bought lots out there bought them with the expectation that this was an easement that was granted to Canyon Springs so that we would have that easy access to the Forest Service. You take that away, I think you're going to devalue, certainly you're going to devalue my property, and I imagine just about everybody's out there. So I'm in opposition to this, but on the other hand, I want to be very respectful of my neighbor and work with them so that they, that we minimize any disruption to their home.
Questions for Mr. Vulcan.
Mr. Vulcan?
Yes.
So you wouldn't be opposed necessarily to some kind of reduction of the width of the easement as opposed to?
Actually, I would be very much in favor of that. I think sixty-foot is just too much to take out of their property, and, you know, twenty-foot is more than enough. And speaking of that gate, by the way, that gate does not belong to the Forest Service. All the fences and gates out there belong to the Canyon Springs, and we have to maintain them. It's not up to the people that run cattle out there to keep their cattle out of our property, we have to do that. And the fact that the Forest Service slapped a lock on our gate kind of riles me, but nonetheless, we'll deal with that with the Forest Service. And whether they allow us access, motorized access or other access, that's an issue between us and them. You take away this easement, it's gone forever, and we don't have that opportunity in the future.
Other questions for Mr. Vulcan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farabee.
I shouldn't plan to talk about the Forest Service and gates, but since the previous speaker brought it up, I will. I can't imagine if I put a gate, and I do have a couple of gates against the Forest Service, if they put a padlock on them, I'd be more than a little unhappy. That's, you know, it's like he says, we have to keep the cows out. The permittee doesn't have to keep the fence up, it's up to us, anyway. As I understand it, when this PUD was established, however many years ago, let me back up and say that all these folks are my constituents, so I can't take sides, obviously, I won't take sides. But I'll take sides with the facts. If this PUD, if the easement was put in as a selling point, as the previous speaker mentioned, then my recommendation is for those folks, and I believe you have a homeowners association, correct?
We do, and by the way, the fact that they're not opposing it is only because they don't want to pay for a lawyer to come in here and talk to us.
But my recommendation to you folks, and if it gets to us, is let those folks handle their own issue. If the majority of them want to reduce the easement to twenty feet or twenty-five, whatever they want to do, that should be their business and not our business, if that was the way the PUD was established. I get a bit of chuckle out of the Forest Service, and I'm sure that Rodney Brown doesn't mean this. Non-motorized trails, hiking, I can see a horse and pack animal and ATVs, but hiking not authorized on the Forest Service? I find it really tough to, really tough to think that they think that way. All those interior lots, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, those interior lots, if they want to go out hiking on the Forest Service without that easement or permission from a neighbor, those have exterior lots, sure, they can just walk out your back door, crawl through the fence, or under the fence, or over the fence, or whatever. And the Forest Service would be pretty hard pressed to stop them, so that is public ground. When they say that this easement was for the residents to access the Forest Service, I agree, I'm almost positive that's what that was in there for. For the Forest Service to say they don't care, well, why should they care? All around, all the ground around there is theirs. In my situation, I don't have this situation, I'm about a quarter mile against the Forest Service, and I just, if I want to go out in the Forest Service, I go. So, anyway, my recommendation to you folks is to let those folks handle their situation. Thank you.
Questions for Commissioner Farabee? PJ, look, I can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, one like point of clarification I'd like to know is, is Mr. Farabee, because you have referred to him as Mr. Farabee and Commissioner Farabee, I'd like to know how he's speaking and on whose behalf while he's up here. And then I have one more comment after that.
Both, thank you.
PJ.
This actually is an issue that this department and this commission needs to handle, it is a platted easement. The input from the Homeowners Association and the districts there and the Forest Service is all taken into consideration. This was a platted easement, therefore to have it go, come off of that, an exhibit has to be filed through the Register of Deeds, which is why it is in our hands and why we're doing this report.
But PJ, from reading the report, I guess my understanding, there's been no official action by any of the boards out there.
But it's platted. The one the plat was approved, that access easement was approved on the plat. So we're trying to, we got to change the plat, either reduce it or vacate it. Has to change the plat.
I understand that, yeah.
Which is why we're doing this.
Well, so if that's the case, I would think that the board would be interested in becoming a party to this.
Which board?
Homeowners Association.
The owners, I mean.
And I don't know the ins and outs of all their discussion, we've received a few emails from them saying that they voted on it and it was approved then, that there wasn't a vote, and that they, some people approve it, some people don't. The people who have attended that meeting might be able to speak more clearly on that.
Karen. Could we talk, ask staff to talk with the board and tell them they don't need a lawyer, that they can come and speak to us directly and let us know what their preferences are, and that we're considering reducing the width of that easement and find out if they want to have a say in that?
That sounds like a good suggestion, so.
Well, if this has to be replatted, there's some potential expense, I assume.
Well, whether it's vacated or...
I mean, reduced.
There's already been expense, I believe, by the applicant, just, and to vacate is just an exhibit that needs to be filed, they've already had the exhibit done.
Okay.
If you reduce it, they'd have to get it changed again, and I don't know what the cost of that would be.
That's what I'm concerned about, is that then somebody has to be willing to, the association or the applicant, who is the one who's going to profit, obviously, most directly from it, but that needs to be resolved. That's why I think George's suggestion, quite frankly, is fairly good, that Canyon Springs really ought to be here in conjunction with or in opposition to the applicant instead of having us necessarily do that. I mean, I think Karen's suggestion that we have some input from the organization of homeowners is important, in my mind.
Well, my personal view is, I mean, usually easements are put on for a specific good reason, and I mean, it shouldn't be removed lightly. So I, you know, I think this deserves some discussion and debate.
That's fine, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Just for clarification, on the report, is the lot size one and about one and three quarters acres, or is that the size of the vacation?
No, the whole lot is 1.77 acres.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Looks like we had some other public, then.
That's the applicant.
These are the applicants.
Excuse me, so my name is Brandon Noble, and this is my wife Lindsay Noble, we own lot sixty-seven. A couple of things, I guess we wanted to clarify is, when that easement was put on that lot back in 2005 in the plat, and we went back through and looked at the, you know, the minutes from those meetings, it was never put in there for the access of the residents of Canyon Springs. In fact, the only comments that were made was that any access from Canyon Springs Development to Forest Service be for emergency purposes only. It was never designed as a walking or access point, probably why it's sixty feet wide. So, I mean, and they never reference it specifically, they just say any access should be for emergency purposes only. And that was both in the, it was on the item agenda number fourteen dated October tenth, 2005, prior to that plat being changed. And then also in September, September twenty-third, 2013, it was also reaffirmed that any access to the Forest Service be for emergency purposes only. So I just wanted to clarify that for one. Additionally, we've had numerous meetings with the Forest Service, also with the president of the HOA and the Water District. The three of us, Pat Havner, Peter Wharton, and myself met with the Forest Service to discuss that easement. And part of the reason why they put it in there kind of not, you know, as, why they're putting in there so forcefully, there's no access. And we do have a letter from the Forest Service along with email documentation. But basically, their position is when Forest Service property or public property butts private property, in order for there to be general public access through that private lot, there needs to be an easement granted to the United States of America, to the Forest Service, that allows two-way traffic. What was done in this case, it was just drawn in on the plat, which was not done correctly. And that's why Rodney Brown, the Forest Service, their position is, there is no easement that allows access to Forest Service. It's on the, there's easement on the plat, but it's not an access point because an easement was never granted to Forest Service. And that's why he locked it, and that's why he's saying if there needs to be two-way traffic, the lot owners have to allow that. And so that's why he wrote the letter, and his comments reflect that as far as there being easement to the United States of America. So even if the easement was shrunk down to twenty feet, it still wouldn't allow access for the public, either motorized or hiking, because the Forest Service says you can't do that. There needs to be an easement granted to them, which there never was. And when we met with them, part of the purpose we met with them, both the president of the HOA and the Water District, was to see, okay, there's no access through our lot sixty-seven, but what about using some of these common areas, as Mr. Vulcan pointed out? And he said they'd absolutely be willing to grant an access gate through common area. And one of the areas we discussed was the common area that sits just to the east of our property, there's three acres. And it's kind of a steep hill down, but as it approaches the next lot, it's actually a very gentle, flat, gradual place. And that was the place that was agreed upon, that would be an easy place for the residents of Canyon Springs to access. They would even design a gate to put it in. And so, having that information, we went back, there was a water sanitary district meeting where members of the HOA, who are the members of, the voting members of HOA, and the Road District met. And when we met and met with them, we were under the impression that was actually an agenda of the meeting to actually vote on this, but it turned out it was, in their opinion, was a discussion of it. But the HOA met, the Water Sanitary District, the Road District, all discussed it, everybody voted that they wouldn't oppose it. And Pat Havner, who's the president of the Sanitary District, who wrote that email here, said that he's not opposing it, but he thought since it was on the property, it should stay because we were aware of it. But as it sits now, there's a sixty-foot wide easement on our property that doesn't serve to benefit any of the residents of Canyon Springs because it can't be used as an access point. The Forest Service is saying you can't access there, so.
I guess the comment I would have is, you said there wasn't any discussion on the original plating. A lot of times when a developer is doing something, that they put in accesses for those purposes, and they may advertise it that way to purchasers of the lots, and it doesn't need to be spelled out, I mean, it can just be offered on the plat. And I guess the other comment I would have is, it sounds like the Forest Service is rendering a legal opinion, and I'm not sure that, who you're speaking to is an attorney, I guess I'd rather get a legal opinion from our side, whether there's access or not.
Sure, sure. A couple of things, you know, in the, first of all, on the minutes of that meeting, there was never any, nothing ever says that that was for access. If that was their intent, it was never presented that way when they platted it. And in the minutes...
It doesn't need to be when a developer comes forward with the plat, he can just offer easements.
He can just offer, yeah, I'm saying the intent was never for access to the residents, it was never stated that way.
It wouldn't on a plat, that's my point, it wouldn't on a plat, but when they go to sell the lots, they may present it that way.
But in the minutes, though, the discussion, it was never presented that way. And also, in the minutes, they state on two times, and it was approved even in 2013, that any access from Canyon Springs Preserve Development to Forest Service would be for emergency purposes only, not for than, you know, to access the Forest Service land. And it's right in the minutes in September twenty-third, 2013, and that was part of a condition that was put in there, so.
Again, there's some legal aspects, I guess I'd like to get from, I guess I'm kind of heading towards this should be continued to look at both the input from the Homeowners Association and from the legal aspect, because unless there's restrictions on the plat, minutes don't mean anything if it's not restricted on the plat, is my understanding. And again, I'm not attorney either, that's why I think there's some legal questions here that need to be resolved.
Sure, sure, and you know, we have the copy of the letter from the Forest Service that we can provide as well, you know, stating the fact that there needs to be an easement to the Forest Service, just drawn on the plat doesn't create an access point for people, so.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one thing? So if we removed this easement, that takes away emergency access to, do you understand that?
Sure, but actually, that's not correct. Actually, that's not correct, because there can't be emergency, whether it's for the public to access Forest Service or for the development for emergency purposes, there still would have had to been an easement granted to the Forest Service.
I understand that, but I just want you to answer me.
Sure.
What are you going to say when the fire's coming up the hill toward your place and there's no way for a fire truck to get there?
The fire truck to get there from, oh, in the back of the Forest Service? You know, we discussed that with Rodney Brown, and they can access in several other places. If they needed to, they could always go through the property there. They've stated they don't need that easement there to fight fires.
Mr. Chair, I'd really like to understand the emergency part of it too. I think that's more of concern to me than personal access, because I get it that I wouldn't want my people going back and forth across my property, but I am concerned about emergency access, and I think that needs to be a part of our discussion if we continue this.
Well, and I think, I don't understand why, even as emergency, why it'd be sixty feet.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You know, it's almost, that's almost right away for county section line.
I agree.
Right.
It's unduly wide, I think so.
I agree with that. But I don't want to completely get rid of the access if it's going to create issues for...
Safety.
Safety.
And just, you know, just want to rewrite, there's no access now, you know, so you're not really getting rid of anything.
There's a road there.
There's no road there, there's the easement there, but...
Stop pictures.
There's no road, you can pull it up again, it's just plowed up dirt from the development. Again, there's the easement, there's no, there's no access currently, and that's the Forest Service position. Can't access it for emergency or personal as is.
An emergency, it'd get used.
Yeah, I mean, it'll get used, same as if there was something back there, they would cut the fence and drive through there.
That's what I was...
The reason why there's not a road there, the reason why it's all tore up is because people have been driving through on four-wheelers through private property.
And that could be very irritating, I get...
Oh, yeah, they've been, yeah, they've been tearing, there's been a lot of cutting of the fence because there are trails so close on the backside.
So it's not actually a road at all, it was just created by people going through there
that are not supposed to be.
Is anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Thank you.
My name is Mr. Chair, and now I'm speaking as Painton County Commissioner, District One. I will offer my services, since most of the Forest Service is in my district in Painton County. I'll talk to Mr. Rodney Brown, and he'd be the District Ranger, and, and get a legal position on whether or not we can, all of us can hike, and I stress hike, on federal ground. I will offer that, and I would certainly go along with your notion of continuing this item. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Staff's recommendation is for approval of the vacation of easement. From the discussion, I think we're leaning more towards a continuance. Does someone wish to offer a motion, either for agreeing with staff's recommendation or for a motion to continue?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this to the second meeting in April, or if that's not sufficient time, continue it until we can have information, both from the Forest Service and from the Homeowners Association and Canyon Springs Sanitary District.
Second.
About their opinions. And emergency response from where? From the county? Fire Department?
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion, I guess, question for the applicants. Is there a time sensitivity to this matter for you?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
Sig, just to clarify, are we wanting to move that then to the April twenty-seventh meeting? Is that what we're thinking?
What's the date? I don't have calendars.
That's the thirteenth or twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, I think, is the motion.
Unless there's not been contact with all of those entities. Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion to continue is approved. Takes us to item thirteen.
Kelsey Roche, Planning Department. All right, item number thirteen is for a proposed road naming for Valkyrie Lane. Historically, Pennington County has not allowed the naming of a private driveway, unless it has, gives access to four or more lots. This, at this time, would only give access to two lots. Do you have questions for me? Do you want me to explain it a little further? Or I know, I think the applicant is here, so if you have questions for them...
I, I probably have questions, but it probably is a bit more for the applicant, I guess. I would like to hear the compelling reasons why we should name a driveway. The applicant here. Before I jump to, any questions for Kelsey before we go to the applicant?
Give it up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Maybe step forward.
Hi, my name's Jeff Hoffman. My wife, Christie, and I own the property that we're looking at. There's several reasons. One, on the north side of the road there, we have eighty-five acres. It's, well, I have no current plans to develop that into more lots. It's easily conceivable at some point with that amount of land that, that we will have more, more building up there. The other thing is, you, you can't really see it from a vertical view, but the house will not be visible from the road. We'll be building somewhat north of where that yellow line ends, up in the trees. And with the terrain of the land, you won't be able to see the, the property from the road. It's, the house will be about six hundred yards from the road, and it, and it won't be visible. One thing that naming the road would do, it, in, in my opinion, it might help emergency responders if they pulled up and said, gee, there's, there's no house here, to, to realize that there is a road and a house at the end of the road.
I, maybe this is a question more for staff or nine-one-one department, but I assume all the addresses are tied in the, to a GIS coordinate system. So I mean, whether it's visible or not, I don't know, it plays a point on emergency services.
Yeah, and as, as long as the, the address is posted clearly, they should be able to find it pretty well, I would think. Mr. Chair?
Karen.
This property will have a fire number, right? That's its, and that address, the fire number will be posted where? It should be posted where it intersects with South Highway sixteen. Okay. Just, just for ease of, you know, noticing it. Right. Yep. Thanks, Kelsey. Also, there was some question in here from reading the, all of the material that you provided, that there is a question of security.
That was a, that was a thought. I don't think it's a significant issue, but it was a, a thought that occurred. And I think that the Planning and Zoning answered that. They don't think that that would be a significant benefit, and I can't argue with their decision on it. Matter of fact, either way you decide on this is, you know, we, we've, we've made the request, but, you know, and, and we've, we respect your decision whichever way you go.
Thank you.
I guess the question I had is, you know, there's quite a bit of discussion on future plating, future subdividing. You mentioned it also. The, the thing we can't tell by looking at this, I mean, that road may have to change entirely to meet road. I mean, depending on how many lots, and if you got eighty-plus acres, it could be quite a few lots, and they'd have to meet different standards. It could even be located in a different spot. So I guess, you know, kind of hedging for the future. I'm not sure how that applies because it, it could be modified anyway. And, and again, it seems appropriate, if we start naming driveways, I, this is unusual. I think in the fact that it's so long. And it is, you know, like you're saying, the hidden house, you know, it is likely going to be a road and it's probably in the same spot. It may get modified a little bit with development plans. But I can understand the county's concern, not why you set a precedent as far as with naming driveways, essentially. Mr. Chair? Jim?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm curious about how, how does the county, when the fire truck is racing down Highway sixteen, does a soft feminine voice then say, at this road junction where there is no sign, turn right? And go to, I mean, I, what I'm saying is, do I understand in the absence of naming this street, there will be no sign there or indication? I mean, it's not quite the same as driving down a road and looking off and being able to see something, and then having a mailbox sitting out there. I mean, with, what, what kind of indication, or does the GPS, as I say, slowly move you in the right direction?
Ted may be, be able to answer this better than, than I can.
Good morning. Ted Rufflett with the nine-one-one Dispatch Center. To your, to your question, the dispatchers are the ones that have access to the GIS information, typically in a fire truck or an ambulance. They may or may not, but they're normally busy driving. And what I told Mr. Hoffman was, we, I recommend it against this, of course, because we try to avoid naming driveways. But we have made exceptions, and the exceptions typically revolve around, is the house so far off the name road, is it visible? And in this case, it won't be visible. So that has been in a, a case in the past where exceptions have been granted. Whatever you decide here, there would either be a street name sign at the intersection or the house number, the five-digit house number would have to be posted.
Okay.
The concern with the road naming is, is that, when you get, our concern from nine-one-one is we don't want duplicate road names, similar road names, anything that causes confusion. You get new firefighters, new paramedics, new law enforcement officers all the time who have no idea where these roads are. If you send them at two in the morning to Antelope Creek Road, and they think it's the one out in the valley, and they head that way, and it turns out to be the one out by Box Elder, that's very common. It does happen. And so, you know, you have to consider the safety issues of, is it, is it, is it the type of road where it would help to name it or not? And again, our job is to try and, when it's going to be named, we're looking for, to avoid confusion, duplication of names. And so, if, if the homeowner has some compelling reasons for an exception, we typically support that. In this case, it's not visible from the road, so that would be a reason to grant an exception. The development, that's kind of your decision. We typically wait until the development occurs and then use that as the, as the catalyst for changing people's addresses. So, I don't know if I've answered, if there's any other thing...
So, a soft feminine voice doesn't necessarily direct you, but, or does it?
Well, we have several gentlemen that work for us, too.
Okay.
Other questions for Ted? Thank you. Other questions for Kelsey or the applicant? And staff is recommending, recommending approval?
I can recommend approval, just because, based on the fact that it's only two lots. So, it's up to you.
Someone want to venture a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to deny the request.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, to deny, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion to name the driveway is denied. And we are a recommending body. You can appeal it to the county commissioner, so...
This is no long process, I know, with, with lots of restrictions, getting this house built on...
If, if you want to speak, if you could come to Mike, forward.
Fine, no thank you, sir.
Okay. PJ, did you want to offer something else, or?
I was just coming up for the next item.
Okay. Item, going back to item twelve.
One second while I get item twelve up. Item twelve is layout plat fifteen oh five and subdivision regulation variance fifteen oh three to reconfigure lot lines to create lots seven R and lots nine, and lot I N R of Deerfield Park subdivision. The applicant owner are David and Celia Nagelhut. Other owners are Michael and Deanna Day with Fisk Land Surveying as the agent. This does involve three lots. This is a subject property as a whole, showing all three lots. The outside boundary is highlighted in red, and the interior lot lines of seven, eight, and nine are separated by the blue lines. And I've also shown here through the use of the color boundaries, lot seven, eight, nine. Essentially, what they're doing is taking lot seven and taking half of lot eight and adding it to lot seven, and taking the other half of lot eight and adding it to the rest of lot nine to create lots that look essentially like that. That would increase the size of lot seven from, excuse me, one second here, from three point one nine acres to five acres, and increase the size of lot nine from three point four nine acres to five point one two acres. And they are decreasing density by this action. This item was routed through the Interdepartmental Review, the plat was, and nothing of concern came up. Also, the subdivision regulation variance, which they requested, the first one was percolation tests and soil profiles. Essentially, there's already two existing houses. There's two existing septic systems on that property, so waiving those, staff does not have a concern with that. Also, they have asked to waive topography at five-foot contour intervals for the plat, and staff does not need that item to approve, to approve the plat in the future. They've also asked to waive roadway improvements, varying surface width and any other roadway improvements. As far as plat fifteen oh five, as proposed, they're, again, they're decreasing density. Deerfield Park Road and Court are previously platted sixty-six-foot wide access and utility easements with gravel driving surfaces between twenty-seven feet and eighteen feet wide. Subdivision regulation variance was also routed through the Interdepartmental Review, and no items of concern came up. There are two motions we'd like to make. First, the staff recommends approval of layout plat fifteen oh five with ten conditions. And then also, if you choose to recommend approval for subdivision, oh, staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variance fifteen oh three.
Mr. Chair?
Questions?
I only have one question. Condition number three, that existing easements for Black Hills Electric Cooperative underground power lines remain valid?
Yes.
I couldn't find anywhere in our packet where it showed where those are. Unless I was just stupid.
I looked for those as well, and I don't have them, but those from the comments from Black Hills Power, that those came into play.
And they didn't indicate where they are?
Not in the comments that I received, no.
Okay.
There are, one second here.
Would those typically be along the lot line?
Right.
They can be sometimes on lot lines. They can go right across lots.
Well, I know a lot of times in the rural areas, too, they would do it on the rear lot line, too, or...
They can be anywhere. The agent is in the off, in the audience today. She might have some insight into that.
Oh, yeah, there's Janelle.
No?
Questions for PJ before we go to applicants or representative? Other questions? Janelle?
Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants. In regard to the Black Hills Electric Co-op easement, it would be a blanket easement. And we wouldn't, a blanket easement is an easement that isn't defined. It, it exists on a piece of property wherever the lines happen to be. And our plat would not propose to change or alter that. And if we define the easement, then we lock them into a certain area. So we would propose to just, yeah, leave it the way it is. We're not reducing that, right, taking it away, anything by that action. So leave it as is.
Well, I guess the concern is, if it's on the, is there, existing right now, is there a power line buried right now?
I have no idea if there are, if there's a buried power line. We don't do utility locates per se for this type of, since we weren't proposing to alter any easements, so...
I just, I guess I'm looking at if they're building, choosing to build a different structure, a bigger structure. And, and now they could, where the old lot line used to be, and they may be impeded. But I assume that's something they could work out with Black Hills Power if they wanted to build a house.
They would need to if, if, at whatever time they wanted to do a building permit, if they found that there were conflicts, they would address it at that time, I guess. Okay.
Other questions for Janelle? Thank you.
Thank you.
Recommendation from staff for the layout plat is for approval of layout plat ten, fifteen oh five with ten conditions?
Six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please come forward.
Can I ask a good question?
Sure.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm Monty Lutz. I, I have a condominium, which is on the other side of the road there. You can't see it in, in the picture. This might, this might not apply to me in any way, shape, or form, but I just want to get an understanding. Are they changing from two lots, I mean, from three lots and condensing it down to two?
Yes, correct. That's what they're requesting.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I, I don't think the, I don't think the condo association is, is aware of this. And the only reason that we would be concerned would be, there's, there's common area, there's fifty-two acres of common area that this, this landowner, these two landowners are part of the Homeowners Association. We are part of the condo association, so there was fifteen homeowners with fifteen lots. There's ten condo owners. But when we pay for the common area expenses, it's divided by twenty-five because there's twenty-five separate properties. Well, if this gets condensed down to two lots instead of three lots, then all of a sudden, it's now divided by twenty-four, and the percentage goes up for the condo assoc, the condo association owners. It's now divided by twenty-four instead of twenty-five.
I guess, my, my, my gut feeling is this falls in the same kind of category as covenants. The county can't enforce covenants. It's something between the Homeowners Association and, you know, those are rules outside of the county's purview.
Well, that's, I mean, it's, it's, I understand. It's, it's, it's our problem. I mean, it's, it's our problem. I was just trying to get clarification. Is that what's actually happening here? Is that they're condensing three lots into two lots? Because if it does, it takes, it, it takes and goes from twenty-five total, total, you know, dividing the expenses by twenty-four now instead of twenty-five.
Well, and from what you're saying, it's strictly by the number of lots. It's not by acreage of the lots and proportional...
Number of lots. It's strictly number of lots. And like I say, you know, with the fifty-two acres that we have, there's a lake on... And like I say, you know, with the 52 acres that we have, there's a lake on the property as well. That's all part of, the 52 acres is a common area. So, the road is part of the common area, the lake, you know, there's, you know, just bare ground, what have you. But there's maintenance involved too. There's garbage service, for instance, that's divided by, divided by 25 now. The fish stocking is divided by 25, the road maintenance. You know, all these, all these things are divided by 25. And if this happens, then all of a sudden we go to 20, 24. And the only reason is, is we're in a legal issue with them because somebody did this once before. It actually started out as 26. There was 16 homeowners. One other homeowner, you know, consolidated their land. Okay, then now they're forcing the issue, well, there's only 25, 25 lots, so we should only have to pay 25, thus increasing the expense to the condo association. Now, it happens again. How many times does that have to happen? And we just keep paying and paying and paying. It's just like, I mean, nobody in the condo association is even aware of this. I mean, I just happen to be here because we're going to be talking, you know, item number 15, but.
I assume that notice had to be sent out.
For layouts? And again, it's just a layout plat.
It's a layout, that's right.
Yeah, that's all it is, just a layout.
I guess, like I said, the county doesn't control how the homeowners' association rules are set up. It could have been set up by acreage, which I would have thought it would have been.
No, it's not.
But I'm just saying, the county, county doesn't know that or control that, and I guess.
I understand.
I defer to Kinsley. But I don't think, you know, basically you're asking the county to interfere with the homeowners' association.
And I know, no, I'm not, I'm just telling you our situation. I was only up here to clarify if that is exactly what was happening. Is this, are these two individuals, are they consolidating, you know, two lots out of, out of three? I mean, that's, that was my question. I mean, I know it's our problem, it's this, I was just trying to get it clear in my head exactly what's happening here.
And I assume that, you know, the homeowners' association could pursue civil action to halt the process if.
Well, I mean.
Let me, I guess defer to Kinsley, get some background information or legal opinion.
Yeah, I, Kinsley grew up from the state's attorney's office. Yes, this would be something that the homeowners' association, everyone would want to take up, and maybe they'd change their rules about how they want property input, the funds dispersed. But that is something that it would be the private homeowners' association that would deal with that, and it wouldn't be something that the county would enforce or necessarily look at other than just some sort of public input that you wanted to see, you know, if you did want to consider it.
But I'm not sure from a legal standpoint, that's grounds for denying a layout.
Yeah, not necessarily as grounds for denying it, but just in terms of, I guess I should just leave it at, ah, it's not grounds for denying it. It would be something that the individual homeowners' association should change their rules if they want to, if that's a concern to them.
PJ, when they go to the final plat, does that notice then go out too?
Thank you. Even with a minor plat or preliminary, it would go out depending on which route they take.
Okay.
Notice would go out, yeah.
So, they will have some time still before this becomes?
Yes.
Finalized.
Oh, yeah. This is basically just can we do it, and if so, what would come into play if we did it?
And so, if they went minor plat, there'd be one more step. If they go preliminary, there are two more, right?
Correct. Minor would be the next and last step, or if they went preliminary and final, there'd be two steps.
When will this be decided, decided on, then?
Well, they'll recommend approval today, and then it'll go next Tuesday to the.
Can, like she just said, it would be something, it's not just the homeowners' association, though.
But there, that's the point. There's at least one more step. On minor plat, there's going to be another hearing. If it's preliminary and final, there's two more chances for public input.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would, would ask, I guess, is because I'm personally involved because my assessments are going to go up.
Right, I understand.
And like I say, I just happen to be here on a different, different subject, and I recognize the property. So, that's why I'm asking, questioning, sorry about that again. But I guess if, can it just be, can it just be postponed until we can address? I know we have to address.
With a layout plat, and PJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no timeframe. It's up to the applicant when they want to come make the next step. So, we don't have, it's not like in two weeks you're going to hear it, or it's six months from now it may not be heard. It's up to the applicant's timeframe when they want to move forward with, you know, either minor plat or preliminary plat and final plat.
Okay, but, but as far as, like, say, our group here is concerned, would something like that, if I wasn't voicing something right now, would you, would you basically agree to this now?
I'm guessing we're probably going to agree to it anyway. I'm guessing we probably are anyway. You make a good point, but I mean, like I said, and it may make a difference to staff whether it gets put on consent calendar when it comes up for minor or preliminary. But like I said, either way, it will be on the agenda at some point in time, but the app, the landowner controls that timeframe, not us.
Okay, so, okay, so when will, when would it be finalized that something like this would occur? I mean, because I understand there's more steps. I mean, I have done this, I mean, I don't know how all this works, so. But when would it be finalized, then?
The landowner could sit on it for, I don't think there's a timeframe. It could be two years from now before they come forward with a minor preliminary plat.
Okay.
But it could be next?
It could be next, next meeting.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's why I'm trying to, I just, I'm just trying to get a feeling for how much time I have to, you know, notify our people and let them know that this is, that their expenses, you know, their assessments are going to go up.
Unless it's on, it's already on the agenda for the next meeting, it's at least a month away.
Nothing's been filed. If they were to take that next step and when they take that, advertising would go out. And since the PUD for Deerfield Park is within 500 feet of the boundary, the PUD will get letters.
Okay, so that's where the 500, okay, that'll be fine. That'll be fine, so, I didn't mean to.
No, no, but I mean, like I said, I can't give you a timeframe because it's up to the landowner and when they want to move forward.
I understand, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Janelle?
If I can clarify, there will be no public notice for the minor plat. This is all zoned LDR. We fall within the lot sizes, and for minor plat, there is no public notification. So, there will be no notices to go out.
Well, there's at least advertising.
There's advertising, but there's no.
Oh, that is?
Yeah.
Other than I was incorrect with the minor, then?
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate the clarification, Janelle.
So, just want to be sure that you understand there. And these homeowners will also face the same assessment increase. And I did really want to clarify that it's really important that, I believe that it's important that you honor your past commitments to not interfering in covenants and private issues and that it becomes dangerous water to even allow a continuance for someone to discuss something like that. It sets a bad precedent, so that was all, thank you.
Did we get a, I'm sorry.
So, the people within 500 feet will not be notified, then?
I guess I was incorrect with the minor, if you want to clarify. I assumed that they were, they usually, Jerry's the one who usually sends them out.
It's only if you amend the PUD and you guys are in the PUD would that get notification of by 500 feet? But anytime you do a plat, there's no notification sent out on the layout, minor, prelim, or final.
Okay, so then, what, I mean, to, to.
The agenda item does get advertised.
Yes, it does.
So, I mean, that's the public notice.
Okay, so, so if I check your schedule every Thursday afternoon or whatever, then this item will come up again at a meeting?
Well, it'll be published in the Rapid City Journal as well.
No, the agendas just get posted on the websites and on the agenda board.
But for plat action, isn't that also?
Just, no, just the minutes get posted and the agendas get posted on the website.
Appreciate all the corrections.
I am too.
And I'm supposed to follow this?
This will go to the April 7th Board of Commissioners meeting because they will make the final determination at that meeting.
Okay. On this.
That's one reason we have staff here to correct us up here.
You said it, say it again, Tuesday?
April 7th.
April 7th.
That's the next time that this would be heard.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Learned something today?
Yeah. Don't think we got a motion yet?
No, we don't.
The staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat 15-05 with 10 conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect?
So, moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
One more motion?
We need also to.
Recommendation for subdivision variance 15-03. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the variance request for the percolation tests, the topography at the five-foot contour intervals and road improvements.
I'll move that too. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same side. Motion carried. And we're on to item 14.
Thank you.
All right, item 14 is a layout plat, plat request by Donald and Norma Lindy. They are requesting to create lots 1 and 2 of Lindy subdivision. Currently, they have a lot of 39.73 acres in a low-density residential district. As I said, their parent parcel is zoned low-density residential. It was actually rezoned from general ag to low-density residential in 1999. It's 39.73 acres. They have access off of Boulder Hill Road via an existing approach across Forest Service property. However, this access across Forest Service property, which is located right here, is not actually access that has been legally granted to them by the Forest Service. They have submitted the proper paperwork for a special use permit with the Forest Service. However, the Forest Service has indicated that this will not, is not scheduled for completion and/or approval, denial, whichever route they take until 2016 or later. The property currently consists of three single-family residences. They are all addressed appropriately. 23816 Boulder Hill Road is this, or this residence. It is the primary residence on the property. It does have its own onsite wastewater treatment system. It was built in 1965. There is also an approved caretaker's residence, which would be this residence right here. They do have an approved conditional use permit for this. It also has its own onsite wastewater treatment system. And then the third residence on there is a, this 1998 double-wide mobile home. However, staff has determined that this mobile home does not currently have an approved building permit. Previously, there was a 1970 single-wide mobile home and also a 1973 single-wide mobile home in this location. The applicant has indicated that sometime between 1999 and 2000, the current mobile home was placed there. He was under the understanding that it would be grandfathered. However, since it is a newer mobile home, after 1994, it is not grandfathered and would have required a building permit. There is also several, there is a barn structure on the property that was built in the 70s. There are other outbuildings, mostly just small sheds that are located on the property. So, what they are proposing to do, let me bring their layout plat back for you. What they are proposing to do is create lots 1 and 2, as you can see here in their layout plat. Proposed lot 1 of Lindy subdivision would be four acres. That does meet the minimum three-acre lot size requirement for low-density. It's vacant of any structures, and it does have access via that proposed 66-foot wide access easement through the parent parcel. Proposed lot 2 of Lindy subdivision over here would also be four acres, so it meets that minimum required lot size. It would contain that existing double-wide mobile home that we just discussed and the onsite wastewater treatment system for that one as well. The access for that would be via this 66-foot wide access easement that would go through the parent parcel and also through lot 1. As I stated, that residence over here does not have an approved building permit, so plating would bring this residence into compliance because currently it does not have a building permit and it also does not have an approved conditional use permit to have that residence there. So, essentially, it is completely in compliant right now. So, plating would bring it into compliance in terms of the residence being there. They still would have to obtain a building permit for it. However, it wouldn't require a conditional use permit or anything along those lines if this plat were to be filed as a final plat with the register of deeds. If this plat is not approved, or if for some reason the final plat is not filed, the applicant would need to obtain an approved conditional use permit for that residence as a farmhand, or a farmhand residence or some sort of other approved use. Otherwise, they would need to remove that residence from the property. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1438 with 20 conditions.
I have a question regarding 9, and this is probably a pretty minor point. I guess road name approved through emergency services and, and on the staff report talks about, you know, basically, basically avoiding family names, first, last names. And I guess, I mean, I know as you drive out to the airport, you go by Jackie Lane. And I think there's a Penny Lane in the county too. And I was kind of also surprised by the comment of, I guess I didn't realize that Painton County tries to coordinate with names in Custer County.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, okay.
It county.
And I didn't, because I mean, like, I know there's Spring Creek Road in different counties, and I mean, you'll see, as you drive through the state, you'll see the same name on several counties, so. More, probably more curiosity, and I guess there are names that we use right now that are in the county that are first names or family names.
The understanding that I have from 911 in some of the other comments and things like that that I've seen is that they are concerned with duplicate names in different counties and also similarity of names. I don't know that that's something that they've always looked at, but I do know it's something that they are looking at a little bit closer now in terms of similarity to other road names even in the different counties.
Well, and I appreciate that, because I mean, I live on Starlight, and there's a place out in Rapid Valley that's got Moonlight, Twilight. And I've had delivery people go out to Rapid Valley, and I live on the west side of town, so.
And I think that's what they're trying to avoid.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a comment? There's some things that have evolved over the years, you know, when we had that federal mandate that we had to mark our roads for fire responses and so on. But also, one of the things that has really happened is that our Black Hills area definitely has become very cooperative in emergency service and responses. And so, I think it's an evolving thing. Many of those, like Penny Lane, that's been there a long time, long before this started. And so, they're changing how they're doing things because the process and procedures are changing. And that, I know there is a Meadowlark in North Rapid and a Meadowlark in Countryside North, and I understand that, but I think those were, well, I'm pretty sure those were named before this process started, and it's different, so they don't want it to continue. They want to try to minimize the issue for the firefighters and ambulance drivers, that sort of thing.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Nancy.
Mr. Chair?
Karen?
I have a question along the same lines. Back when we were talking about the Valkyrie Lane issue with the Hoffmans, I believe it said that they, the county recommends naming only when there are four or more lots, and there are only three here. So, I was curious about why they were recommending a name for this particular?
The way that I understand it is the reason for this one is because of the three residences that are on the property, not necessarily for the lots that are on the property, but because of the amount of. because of the amount of residences that are there.
So how are they addressed now? Do you know?
Currently, they're all addressed off of Boulder Hill Road.
Okay.
Two-three-eight-one-six, two-three-eight-one-eight, and two-three-eight-two-zero.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for Cassie? Questions from the public. George?
Just like to make a comment. Address changes are tough.
Oh, yeah.
You know, whenever you change addresses, you can figure, two, three, four, or five years, you're still getting mail. I know where this property is, and I don't see a reason that we can't make an exception, just leave the three numbers that are there off of Boulder Hill Road. What's the harm? Thank you.
Now, staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat fourteen thirty-eight with twenty conditions. Anyone want to offer a motion to either per staff's recommendations or with any condition modifications?
Well, I guess that, you know, to be consistent with what we did in a prior one, it doesn't make sense for us to require condition number ten, which would say the readdressing part of it. So I guess I would move that we approve layout plat fourteen thirty-eight with removal of condition ten.
And condition nine?
And what?
And condition nine as well?
Given a road name. Oh, yeah, okay. All right, sorry. I thought I'd, okay, that one also applies to the...
No, if you're not changing.
The road name. I guess any other place in the conditions that refer to changing the road name should be modified, too.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same side. Motion carried. Item fifteen.
I have my technical staff here helping me out. I'm Rex Backroll, County Ordinance Officer. What we have before us today is a planned unit development review for Deerfield condominium, park condominiums. Back in, oh, August of two thousand fourteen, our office received a complaint from Noonie Soleil and Van Norman Law Office, who's representing the Homeowners' Association, saying that there are more apartment, condominiums being rented out than should be. In the original PUD, it stated that units five, seven, and nine could legally be rented out on a weekly nightly rental, vacation home rental, basically. And what they're saying, they're contending that other units are doing that illegally. Units one, and they had a list of a few of them. And then along with that, they had stated that possibly they weren't actually a specialty resort. They didn't have licenses to be doing this. And I believe that's the complaint. Oh, and then one of the condominiums was rented out for at least six months, unit seven. And so what I did, I did some research on all of this. And as I recommended there, you can see that they said that units one and two were occupied for a full week in August. What I would say is, yes, if they were, maybe they could, in the future, maybe they could call and make a complaint and allow ordinance office to go out and address the complaint on a complaint-by-complaint basis. Unit seven was occupied by somebody, Abby Gooding, for that, from May to October with her two children. I spoke with state's attorney, and we feel that any homeowner out there has the right to rent their unit, just as any of us would, any house in town or anywhere. So we didn't feel that was a problem or a violation of the PUD. Units five and seven and nine are advertising, I should say, unit five and nine are advertising on vacation home rentals, things like that on the internet. And I've talked to the state. They do, they are licensed. They're okay to do this. They have a very vigorous inspection program that they have to uphold to, and they're all doing that. So there's no violation of the PUD there. Unit seven, I sent a letter to, because I'm not getting through to the person, the owner of it. So I don't, and I couldn't find out on the internet. So I don't know if he's renting right now or not. They possibly do rent, but I don't think he's licensed. So that's my, I guess, the violation in that one.
Could you clarify? I guess, I thought you were saying unit seven is occupied by a lady with her two children.
That was in two thousand thirteen at one point, which would be fine to do. But now, from what I'm hearing...
Do we know, so you don't know at this point in time whether sevens are long-term or short-term rental?
I have not been able to hold the owner of that one.
We'll finish with staff report first.
I'm sorry?
For the audience.
Yeah. I guess what our recommendation would be to go ahead and approve this as was. And then, and like I said, if there are violations, I think we'll be notified by the Homeowners' Association. Somebody from there could directly call our office, and I would immediately get out there and address it with them. The attorney is here representing the Homeowners' Association, and I'd be glad to, you know, work with them directly. So we make them happy with the PUD, make everyone in compliance with it. And there is one homeowner here. Which unit are you, sir?
Five.
And number five. He owns number five in the condominium. And he's, he complies, and he wants to keep it the same way it is. He doesn't, he bought that as an investment and to be able to use it was planned in the PUD. So I think with that, if you have any further questions?
Questions for Rex?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Nancy.
Rex, on those two units that were rented during the full week of August?
Okay.
Would that have popped? It sounds like a rally rental, and where the state allows that, two weeks, right?
It does. They can, anyone can rent their place up for two weeks, and it wouldn't be considered a nightly or weekly rental. The state does allow that. So, and you're right, that is rally time, and that's been a tough one to really uphold. It is. Because there are so many in the county that do that right now. But it is.
And this year's going to be less.
What's that?
This year's going to be less.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
Other questions for Rex?
Are you guys familiar with it out there?
It's beautiful.
Go to the audience now, Monty, I believe.
No, I was just gonna...
Yeah, please step forward.
To answer the question as far as five, seven, and nine.
And if you could just state your name for...
Oh, Monty Lutz. And I own number five, number five condo out there. And Rex is right, five, seven, and nine rent, and all three of us advertise. I think we're all on, like, homeway.com. And I think number nine uses, like, Black Hills Rentals or whatever. But all three of us now are advertising for nightly, nightly, weekly rentals. So... But like I say, I'm only here just, I had no idea what direction the meeting was going to go. I just wanted to protect my interest out there. That's all. So, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Marley Sheppers. I represent the HOA, the Deerfield Park HOA. A couple of comments. You had said that two of the units are licensed. I talked to the Department of Health this morning, and the only one she had record of was number five, which I believe is Mr. Lutz's property, that it's actually licensed as a vacation home, not a specialty rental. Minor difference there, I'm not trying to nitpick. The PUD specifically requires that the three units, five, seven, and nine, if they're going to be used as nightly and weekly rentals, are registered with the Department of Health as a specialty, as a specialty, what's the word they use?
Specialty resort.
Sorry, specialty resort. You specifically said that number seven is not licensed. The question of whether or not nine is, they told me it is not. The records we reviewed showed it is not. So if they are, that's fine.
I have a license here.
Okay.
Through two thousand fifteen.
Great.
For number nine.
Never know who you're talking to.
And I talked to you twice and got different answers, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess to that end, and I'd ask if I can maybe get a copy of that. The one that is not licensed, I mean, I don't know how you can recommend continued approval and no action be taken on a violation of a PUD when somebody is specifically not in compliance with the conditions that are set forth in the PUD. I know it's minor, but I also have, take issue, and my client as well will take issue with the idea that we are to be the policers of the PUD beyond what we've already done in terms of bringing forth a complaint for this to be reviewed, because this is not a permanent residence for them. They're not out there on a daily basis, and they are not going to go door-to-door and make sure that the people that are in each unit are those that live there. And to the extent that they notice that there's a violation, obviously, they'll bring that forward, which is what we did how many months ago, when the violation first occurred, or they were aware of, one of them that they brought forth stemming from August, it was in August that the complaint was brought forward, and we're sitting here in March talking about it. So I would suggest that we need to come up with a better system of if there's going to be, you know, responsibility on our part to make sure that they're in compliance, which I don't really see it as the HOA's responsibility, that there's got to be a better system.
Well, can I answer?
Sure.
Number seven, I wasn't able to find that on the internet at all under homeowners or vacation. So we can't say that he is renting right at this particular time. I sent him a letter. I haven't had a response. So to say we can't approve it, I think we can, because seven is an unknown right now.
I believe Mr. Lutz specifically spoke to that, that they're all renting.
I think he knows that they have rented in the past. I don't know if he knows right now if they're renting. I don't know the answer to that.
And so a complaint can be brought forth, and it essentially, if you can't find the answer that they are violating, it doesn't matter?
Well, then, on the same token, it'll be continued now for another couple months, which you're kind of not wanting to have happen. So it's kind of a catch-22, or...
Right. I mean, to me, then we're setting a precedent for if I'm violating a provision, all I can do is avoid your phone calls and your letters, and then I don't have to be in compliance because you can't get a hold of me, and so you don't have proof that it's happening.
I have more proof that it's not happening than it's happening.
Well, discussions should be directed at the chair, not between you two. I guess the one question I guess I do have for Marley is that you're referring to number nine, nightly, weekly rental units remaining licensed through South Dakota Department of Health as a specialty resort. It's not capitalized specialty resort. So is that just a descriptor versus a legal title?
There's a specific, there's a specific license for a specialty resort versus a license for a vacation rental. We're not here to really argue about whether Mr. Lutz's...
But that's the point you're making. You're saying they're in violation because they are, and then you're saying it's not.
I would suggest that they need to be in full compliance, absolutely. That's not our largest concern. But absolutely, if the requirement says that they should be licensed as a specialty resort, then they should be licensed as a specialty resort with the Department of Health, as is required in the PUD. If they want to amend it to change it to a vacation home rental, I would suggest that they should do that. I talked to them this morning. The difference is very minor, which is why I'm saying that's not our primary concern. Our primary concern is the greater violation of units that are not approved for nightly and weekly rentals, renting for nightly and weekly rentals, and those that are being licensed.
Mr. Chair?
Karen.
Can I ask Marley a question? Is it just number seven that you're concerned about, or are there other units that...
From my conversation with the Department of Health this morning, only number five was licensed. But Rex here has provided me, or shown me, a copy of the license for number...
Number nine.
Nine. So I would suggest that's not, if they're licensed, they're not in violation.
Okay, so it's number seven that you're specifically concerned about?
Number seven would be outstanding, and then, of course, number five is technically not in compliance.
Technically, okay. So there are no other units in the development that you're worried about?
And our concerns, again, are units number one, units number two renting on a nightly and weekly basis when they're not approved within the PUD. And any other unit, for that matter, we just, we don't have any specific knowledge of any of the others. And I understand the county's position on that long-term rental, which is not specifically approved. I would disagree that a six-month rental falls in line with it being a residential unit. They're still renting it commercially.
We've had that discussion on vacation rentals. I mean, it's still a residential unit, and it's not commercial. I mean, it's still residential, whether it's rented or not. It's still, I mean, I guess, Kinsley, you can, I guess, address that if I'm wrong. But that's my understanding when we went through all the vacation home rental, that just because it's rented doesn't make it commercial. It's still, the courts have ruled that it's still residential. It may be, it may be a business, but it's still residential. It's not commercial.
So that would fall under normal residential use by the county definition?
Long-term, yes.
So then, in order to get around the PUD, all somebody would have, or the PUD, all somebody would have to do is rent in excess of the nightly, weekly? Is that what you're suggesting?
Month-by-month is legal, yeah.
Okay.
Or leased. And also, everybody's allowed fourteen days any time of the year. So if your number, units number one and two are only, if your only complaint is during rally, then I think that probably is in compliance with, fully in compliance with the law as well.
Okay.
Any other question that she offered was that they would have to be the policing agency. We don't expect any public to do that. But on the other side of that is I don't have enough time to stand out there at the gate and question it either. So we're just kind of relying on, hopefully, this PUD. They have a copy of it. They know what the legal actions are. If they don't, the whole PUD could come under scrutiny, and other people could lose it. So...
And they're currently not in compliance with the PUD. So that's my concern here in just continuing it as approved, or approving it as it is in its existence. We know for a fact that one of these is not registered with the Department of Health. So I would suggest that some action needs to be taken.
Other questions for you there?
Rex, so I see that you have your letter in here, which you sent to the owner of unit seven. Could you describe your normal procedure on how you try to follow up with actions like this?
It is pretty much that, a letter. I went physically out to the address. Nobody's there. And beyond internet search, I've done everything I can to attempt to give the person notification, and there's nothing, response. I, you know, whether they're snowbirds or what, I don't know. And everything's coming back as, there's no receptacle on the building there, no such person when I sent it to the Hill City address. They just send it back. So I honestly, I don't know what further I could do to, without delaying our action here. And it's been continued so much, like Marley said. I don't want to just sweep it under the rug, but, you know, whether we send copies of this to every owner there saying, you know, this is what we, you guys have to deal with, it will go to state's attorney from here. If you do it, you'll be in violation.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question? Because I know that, you know, now that your research has indicated that there is no license for this particular one?
Right.
Does that, does that prompt some action by us or the Health Department?
I don't think so, because it says he's allowed to use it as such, not that he must. He might not be doing it this year. I don't know.
The, the condition requires that the rental units be registered, period, not when they're renting them, in the year that they're renting them. Those three units were approved as rental units, and the requirement is that the rental units be registered, period.
I guess, I mean, just having lack of information seems like a bad way to go forward to prove it, too. But at the same time, you know, you don't have, you know, infinite amount of time to go chase after... infinite amount of time to go chase after one individual when we have a lot of other issues to address too. I understand that, so I guess I'm looking for guidance from the planning commission on thoughts on that too.
So, mysterious unit number seven, is, is anybody ever seen, anybody in it?
I mean, I have not seen or had any indication that he's there.
Okay, um, I, I can get you their email address. I will do that for you. Um, but they, they are snowbirds. Um, I'm not sure where they, where they go, but, um, and they're, they're seasonal renters. Um, they, um, if you go to like HomeAway.com and go to, um, like Hill City, there'll be, uh, an ad that shows up where it's just a picture of the lake. That's their, that's the property that we're talking about. And, um, but, but the thing is, is they, they don't rent year-round. They rent during the tourist season. So, right, right now, I mean, today, um, they, they would not be able to, to rent because they're not here. Um, and they live right next door to their unit. They, they actually live, when they come for the summer, they live in number eight and they rent out number seven, okay?
So during the winter, they're both empty, right?
Um, they're both empty in the, in the winter. Both units are empty in the winter. That's, that's correct.
Okay.
But number seven is the one that they would, that they would rent. And they've, they've only done that for like, say, a year. Um, last year was their first year that they, they did rentals because, um, the year before is when they had the, the long-term rental, the six-month, you know, group in there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, but maybe I can shed a little light on, on the, um, the, um, uh, what do they call it here?
Specialty.
Yeah, specialty resort versus the, uh, vacation home. Because, um, back in, uh, three twenty-four of two thousand ten, um, basically I contacted, um, the, the state health department and I talked to a gentleman, uh, by the name of Dustin Larson. And I told him what my needs were as far as the PUD was concerned. And I said, um, I needed to, um, set up and, and get, you know, registered with the health department as a specialty resort. He then asked me some questions and he says, "Well, that's not you." He says, "You need to, you need to register as a vacation home," okay? So then I said, "Now, what do I do?" So I contacted, uh, the office here at four fifty-five on three twenty-four, two thousand ten, and I talked to Mandy. I don't know who Mandy is, but you, hopefully you do. Um, talked to Mandy at Pennington County Planning Department. She said whatever state recommends for, um, category to register would be fine with them. Dustin Hoffman at Office of Health Protection suggested it be registered at, as a vacation home. So I got permission to register our property as a vacation home through Mandy, you know, so...
That, that kind of gets to the point that I was making. It's a specialty resort, not capitalized, so it's not proper, so it's more of a descriptor.
And, and the, the state health department would agree with you one hundred percent on that.
Mr. Chair?
There was no category.
Nancy.
Just, just to make a comment, I don't know if you all remember that, but there was a lot of controversy within our county around that time of whether we even wanted to acknowledge vacation home rentals. And my suspicion is that we, we weren't really acknowledging them, so we called it a specialty resort. And it, and it's a sign of the times and it's changed since then. So perhaps, given her, um, concern, it, it would be something that we should just change the terminology because that is reflective of a long time ago.
And whatever they call it, I don't really care.
Yeah, I know.
Um, I mean, because it falls into a category to where, um, they understand that people are going to come and use, use our, 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 our home or whatever. And so, the main things are, do you have the fire extinguishers? It's addressed. Do you have the smoke alarms? It's, it's addressed. Do you have the non-slip sticky things on the bathtub? Yeah, we do. You know, it, it's all the things that were, I mean, if you were in a hotel or whatever, I mean, all the things would...
Correct.
Would, I mean, it's, what do you call it, doesn't make any difference as long as they're all, all the safety stuff is there, so.
And, and Mr. Chair, I certainly agree with that. That's just what I was trying to help her understand is that I think the times have again changed that terminology from was several years ago. And it would make sense to just update the terminology in the PUD.
Yeah, but not having one could, could be an issue on the other side, you know?
Mr. Chair, I hate to be a pain, but I need to go move my car because it's been two hours. Can we have a recess?
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Why don't we take a, you need a five or ten?
I, I just got to run out and move to another block, sorry.
Okay. Uh, if we take a five-minute recess, do we need to...
So I don't get a ticket. Yeah, sorry. I want you to get a ticket.
Sure.
Brittany just researched it, um, on the Home Away From Home.
Home Away?
And she did find it listed on there. It was last modified on March twenty-two, two thousand fifteen. So it looks, um, Marley also said she looked for it and she couldn't find it within a week. So I think they just put it back on there. So they are, he's technically in violation now. It shows some rentals coming through.
And I guess, uh, a question I had, and this probably goes to Kinsley again and I refer to you, um, to me, you know, do, do you punish the whole PUD, the whole development? Or do you, do we move forward with approving the PUD with those conditions and if they're in violation, i- any specific individual house, you know, then we take legal action against them rather than...
Sure.
Keep continuing this PUD forever, uh, when it sounds like the majority are in compliance or, you know, and then ten of the compliance and, um, and, and I guess, uh, I don't, I don't know the specifics on specialty resorts, but it seemed like when that's come up before, it's been like it needs to be so big or, you know, it's more like for, uh, trail rides, you know, things like that, that, uh, a normal kind of vacation home rental.
We did give a definition on that and it was an employee, um, if you have employees, and they don't have employees when they're vacation home. Is that correct as far as the definition?
Yeah, they have like food handling.
And my guess is right, what Nancy was saying is, I mean, we weren't acknowledging vacation home rentals, so we probably avoided that terminology that the state uses and that, that's kind of why I made the point early on, that I think that was a descriptor, not...
I would, I would respectfully suggest that if that's the intent on the PUD that somehow, that that is noted, um, because it is actually a term that is used with the Department of Health that is different. And so, if the intent of the PUD was to permit, um, vacation home rentals, then I would suggest this needs to be amended.
Well, I believe at the time this PUD was originally created, we didn't have vacation home rentals.
Correct, correct.
In the county.
Right. But as is, we have an existing PUD here that references...
No, I, I agree. I mean, we have...
A, a term that regardless of the capitalized letters, um, the Department of Health, if you call them, they're very two different, two different things, a specialty resort.
You can't prove something that you can't meet either. I mean, we can't require something that's unmeatable.
That's why I would suggest it should be amended.
No, I agree. I, I'm not disagreeing with that, so.
I would ask, um, do we need a PUD amendment on that? Or can, we would, okay?
PJ.
It can't be amended today. That's something that staff can take on, and if you direct us to, to amend the PUD, staff can take it on without the complainants or the applicant's expense.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we ask the staff to amend that wording from the specialty resort to vacation home rental, research if that's correct, and also to contact the person who owns unit number seven and verify their intent and their licensing.
Okay.
I would second that.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Monty, earlier you had, wanted to get up and comment before the break? I thought you did.
Uh, I think I did though.
You did? Okay.
Uh, it was about the specialty resort and vacation, I mean, as far as that.
Okay. A motion second, further discussion. Are there none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
So, I just have to clarify, was that motion also to approve?
For approval, yeah, don't...
Okay, with, okay.
Your motion was just to change the conditions, correct?
No, I did not move to approve.
Okay.
It's, it's continued to, they have to...
You two, staff researching to amend it.
They have to get those, the staff needs to do those two things. That, that was my intent.
Yeah, that was my understanding, yeah. To, to continue to, and have staff look into and amend.
So, okay, do you want a date to put in with the motion at all, or?
I think to some extent it depends on when they're. I guess if you would like a date, I can do that, but...
Uh, within a month, I would...
If we're gonna have, they will have to reconsider the motion, I guess, right?
Or we can amend.
Yeah, friendly amendment.
May eleventh, that would allow for the PUD amendment also? Or April twenty-seventh, either one of those dates.
Need to look at that.
Trying to do it on this, um... Or, that's a Tuesday. Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, okay, all right. May eleventh recommendations.
I'd recommend May eleventh meeting.
So someone can amend my motion.
Then the motion's secondary?
That's fine, yeah, fine with me.
And I'll second.
In favor, amending the motion to include the date of comeback for, um, May eleventh? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We amended to add May eleventh, so.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. I mean, if there's, uh, out of the three units that are rentable, if there's one in violation, then would all three?
That's, one thing I think we're asking staff to look into.
Say, say it again?
That's what we're looking, asking staff to look into, amend, on amending the motion for the vacation home rental and also just to find out if seven is in violation.
And I might look at changing it from will be into maybe rented out as a nightly, weekly. That way they don't have to if they're not doing it.
And, and if it is, then we take action at the continued motion.
Okay, but, but let's say that, um...
We've, we've actually moved forward on that motion already, so I mean, I think it'll be handled on May eleventh. Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify, could you read the motion that was made, please?
Um, yes, for, um, to, can you, to the May eleventh meeting and for staff to amend the language in the PUD from specialty resort to vacation home rental and for staff to contact the owner of unit number seven to verify their intent.
So we're only amending, uh, one thing in number nine, not the whole PUD. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right, I understand.
Okay, I thought I heard something different.
Well, I did ask if maybe I should put May rent instead of...
Yeah, we won't be touching, we won't be touching the other conditions, only that one condition.
That's the motion.
Just wanted to clarify, yep.
Okay.
Item sixteen.
Item number sixteen.
We still haven't done fifteen though. We haven't taken any action on the recommendations.
Just to continue it, wasn't it?
On the PUD review.
Well, if we're continuing.
Yes, motion to continue it to the May eleventh meeting.
Isn't that...
That's what I thought.
Oh, you wanted to continue the whole thing to the May eleventh meeting?
Yeah, I understand.
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, this isn't really designed to ever be resolved, is it? Item sixteen.
Okay, item sixteen, and I need my technical advisor again. But, um, it's Tomavix, they, um, have a specialty resort. And they are in a general agriculture district. They, uh, recently there's been some change in the ordinance that said if, um, the sell or transfer of property, the name changes, that the specialty resort would end, the CUP, and that is in our ordinance. And that's what's happened. Um, Ken and Cory put it into an LLC from their private name, I believe it was in with his mother on this property, and they put in an LLC. And that came to our attention, so what we're doing is bringing it before you to revoke that part of the CUP, the vacation home rental part, and then to allow the specialty resort to continue because he's not, they haven't violated that at all. Um, that is staff's recommendation to do that. And Mr. Tomavix is here and he has a few words that he would like to talk to you about, um, because it's quite a ordeal for him to go through this whole process again, just for, and he, he didn't feel like he was doing anything against the ordinance at the time. And unfortunately, reading it directly from here, it does say that's what has to happen. But he, he might have some other words that he might like to share with you that would bring some different light to you.
Good question from, to staff first.
Mr. Chair?
Karen.
It was, Tomavix were originally zoned SRD.
There's two properties out there. One is SRD and one's general ag.
Okay, I thought that the vacation home rental was on the SRD piece.
The one up there is. There is, they have two.
Two.
The one up there on the left, um, to the west, is their property also, and that is SRD, but that's not this one we're talking about. This one is particularly the one that is general ag, that looks like the triangle going up there.
So, clarify for me the change in the ordinance. Was it just for SRD that with a change in ownership?
No.
The vacation home rental goes away, or was it for all categories?
For all districts. If, if they had done this on their, on their suburban residential, they would have not got it again. Because once it's revoked, it's gone.
Right.
Once it ends, it's done. So I'm glad it was on this one, unfortunately, you know?
So they have, they had two vacation home rentals, one on the SRD and one on...
Correct, totally separate piece, yeah.
And they have reapplied.
Questions for staff?
Yeah.
Just wanted, they have reapplied through a CUP for the vacation home rental on this property as well.
Okay.
Appkin is here wishing to speak.
Yeah, Ken Tomavix. Um, I guess the point that I would make is looking at from the perspective of us back in January of two thousand fourteen, which is when we, or when I transferred it from, uh, the title with my mom and me on it to an LLC with Cory, my wife, and my daughter and her husband. At the time, um, uh, we never even thought in, there's any possibility that that would mean sale or transfer. And in fact, it wasn't until this last fall, uh, November, that that issue was even addressed to try to clarify what the term transfer actually means. So, again, from that perspective of when it happened in January of two thousand fourteen, uh, I don't think we did anything wrong, so those are my thoughts.
Questions for the applicant?
You know, just maybe a comment, Mr. Chair. I don't think you did anything wrong either.
Thanks. I mean, we were just doing what our lawyer told us to do and...
Yeah, and I think that that is part of this VHR, um, committee is, is having them look at how we can do things like that. And we, we just need to change that wording and it's kind of unfortunate that he's getting caught in between when we are trying to straighten that out.
Right.
Because it, it, the wording just needs to be changed to accommodate actions like that. It's really not change of ownership, but that transfer comes through.
Right.
And I was really torn on this and I don't know how the rest of you feel, but, um, I mean, this is what got our VHR committee going again, was this type of thing. And so here we are.
Well, and I, I, I remember Cory being very involved in the whole process as we went through vacation home rental and, and, uh, you know, so, so I, I had kind of struggled like you do too. And to me, it just seems like we're trying to straighten this out. We've talked about that. We're just family, transfers isn't really a transfer. It's not, you know, but same time if we're not careful, people could be sheltering it in corporations too.
Correct.
But, uh, I, I, I get, kind of agree that it's, I, I know Cory was very, you know, very involved, trying to do things right all the time and I'm sure, kind of unintended consequences here and...
Right. And I guess, again, my point would be, is my, my name was threaded through the whole thing and Cory and my name are both on the application originally, or on the application now. And the other point I was going to make is, back when the issue started to come up in the fall, I know she, she told me that she talked with PJ and, and I guess I, I wasn't there, so I don't know what she said, but, but she indicated to me that, that PJ's indication was just hold off and let's see how everything kind of shakes. but, but she indicated to me that, that PJ's indication was just hold off and let's see how everything kind of shakes out. So, so anyway, there you go. So, and I guess what I'm trying to do is, is if I can, if there's a threat of hope, to avoid the spending the extra $370 and go through all the hassle of doing this all over again when it's already, it's already been done, so.
And something that I unfortunately had to recommend is, if he was still operating it at the time of submittal of the application, it was the double the fee plus the 500, and I said, if you just take it offline for a little while till you reapply and don't rent it, and he willingly did that. He, he's wanting to do the right thing. I think just some paperwork got put in there that maybe shouldn't have.
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
Can I ask a question? So just to clarify, other than maybe some embarrassment, you were also, um, in your time and involved in all of this, then you, there was also the expense, correct?
$370.
Okay, okay. Which did not include fines, but included to reapply, correct, for the CUP? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Plus mailing, plus any conditional problems with any neighboring properties?
Or any potential maybe renters or you didn't have during that timeframe?
Yeah, we're okay there. We're fine there.
Well, no, but I mean, if, you know, depending on when you became aware of this, that could have a huge impact on you.
That's true.
Right? Okay.
Correct, yes.
Is, uh, do, do we know a timeframe of when the VHR committee is looking for new recommendations? I guess I haven't heard anything yet.
They're just starting to meet.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm...
They, they have a meeting today at, you have a vacation rental meeting?
Talking to Kinsley. What was the question?
Oh, i- if, if there's any schedule on the vacation home rental.
The first meeting's gonna be on Friday from 1:30 to 3:00.
I mean, there's no end schedule at this point. I mean, we're just starting.
Oh, absolutely not, no. They haven't even picked their chair or anything yet, no. They haven't even gotten together in one group as far as I know. Be careful with this one.
Since I know that's one of the issues that need to be addressed, I guess I was just trying to see if there's a way, can this be continued for six months or, you know, or, uh, I don't know the protocol on...
Although, Mr. Chair, if we continued this for six months, Mr. Tomavik wouldn't be able to rent that property.
If, if it's just a review, it's not an action to revoke it.
Yeah.
It's just...
Staff recommended, um, ending CUP for the vacation home rental.
But it's not revoked currently.
No, it's not. It's in your hands.
So if there wasn't an action to revoke it, it could be continued.
Yep. It's that simple.
Then, can I ask a question? Then does he get his money back?
That would be up to you. We, we cannot, we cannot refund. That would actually be up to the Board of Commissioners.
I don't think we can either.
Essentially, what he did was violate the new ordinance, so as staff, it's our job to enforce that. You can change that all you want. So that's what we did. That's what we're doing.
I wish I would have give you the amendment. I have it right here.
So, and it may change again.
Right, that's what we want to avoid.
So.
Right, this review was just the standard review. It wasn't triggered by a complaint. Is that correct?
This was, this was scheduled as a normal review. That is correct. Just happened to come up now.
Jim?
I hate to prolong this, but I guess I'm kind of confused about what actually happened here. My understanding is that they redefined their legal relationship as far as ownership was concerned.
By changing over to an LLC, they violated the new ordinance.
Right, yeah.
Because of that, it's automatically revoked.
Uh, how did they violate the new ordinance?
By changing over to an LLC that was considered a transfer.
Transfer of ownership.
Right, but if they had...
Left it alone?
No, no, if they had...
Come in for review.
If they had applied for a, a transfer, they would have been okay, right?
If they had gone through the process, that is correct.
Right, and that particular provision was added, what, last year?
No.
It was...
Very recent.
It was not, well, yeah, it was not in the original document.
No, I, from what my understanding is and with conversations with Ms. Tomavik is, um, it was something that they wanted to do. She wasn't sure whether she should or not, and that's why I said, let's hold off and see what happens with the definition of transfer. And then later she did come up to the office and said, oh, we made a mistake. So apparently...
But that provision was an effort to improve the ordinance. If I recall, there were many people who said, hey, let's have a provision so that we can make this transfer without having to go through the process of once again applying, and, um, it seems to me there's, the, to me, the provision seems to be quite elegant in its fairness and directness, quite frankly. Now, the question might be what constitutes ownership? And I guess maybe that should be decided by a court if you want to, you know, if you think you can buy, hire a lawyer for less than $371, which I think would be a stretch, of course. And I, I appreciate their situation, but it seems to me that they are sort of victims of a change of circumstance and through no fault of their own, or I would say no fault of the, of the ordinance, or, you know, I mean, there's bound to be somebody who falls through the cracks. And, um, so I, I'm not saying I'm opposed to some kind of remedy for them, but I'm a little confused by our tendency to define this as the weakness of the ordinance. I think it's an expression of its strength, that we have made this change, and, and I think it's benefited many other people. The Tomavix, unfortunately, are one of those few, I'm not aware of any others, that, um, might suffer from the timing, which it seems to me. So I don't know for what that's worth. As I say, I really don't want to lengthen this, but...
But PJ, you are saying that it is revoked at this point in time because they, they didn't go through the motion of...
According to ordinance, that is correct, and we're just finishing up the paperwork by making it official and making sure that the two things that are on this conditional use permit, that only one gets, is ended, not the recreational resort for the 20, because it's kind of a unique CUP that has two things tied to it. We didn't want both to go away.
Another question.
And we're not opposed to the new CUP that they've applied for, for the vacation rental on the same lot either.
Right.
Just basically the process.
Who, who decided that this was a transfer of ownership?
I believe it came out of the Board of Commissioners.
They, in other words...
When the ordinance was adopted.
You took it to the Board of Commissioners and they just...
No, when the ordinance was changed and adopted.
Oh.
Jay spoke about the meaning of transfer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And highlighted in red is Jay's interpretation of transfer?
Well, yeah, I'm looking...
Or SRD anyways?
If the prospective new owner, and I know, you know, technically, technically it's a new owner. It's the same people. It's...
You're involving people who were not previously owners, so the ownership has changed, it seems to me.
Kinsley wrote on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office, um, just to reiterate, I think initially, any transfer, um, from one individual to an LLC, even under the original definitions and, um, the original ordinance, that would have been a transfer. So I don't think it, this necessarily even falls just under what the county board did in specifying what the word transfer means. This would have originally been considered a transfer no matter what. I think, um, the original, um, how about, the, specifying that, what the definition of transfer is, when that occurred, I don't know, two, three months ago, that was more for instances where you have one spouse, um, two, two, two spouses, that type of thing. That situation. It wasn't necessarily from one individual to an LLC. That's always been considered a transfer. So, just to specify that.
I, I think it would be a nightmare to try to go in and define all the ways in which it isn't, it's, we don't mean to have a transfer, and we do mean to have a transfer. I think some kind of fundamental legal interpretation, and when you change the, the governance, the legal governance of the organization, uh, that I think implies clearly or, uh, would be defined as a transfer. And I think we want to leave it to legal definitions, not to us trying to define these in the hopes of helping people like Mr. and Mrs. Tomavik, which, once again, I don't mean to be unsympathetic, but, um, I, I don't want us to be in a, in an arena that we are not going to be successful in, and I'm afraid that's what would happen if we start constantly rewriting these things in order to define these rather complex legal situations, so.
Ken, I guess is one possibility is to, uh, move forward per staff's recommendation, but in their reapplication process, uh, I know we can't approve waiving of fees, but we could recommend, uh, to the board that we waive fees.
Yep, and I don't believe it's all fees, is it?
Yeah, because there's still advertising cost in the sign, so that would be $96 and then 50 cents. So that'd be the left, whatever left out of that from the 370.
Say it again. I don't think we got it.
I couldn't hear.
Yeah, and if you, if you could speak into the mic to Jerry, because I didn't hear everything that he said.
Because advertising cost, which is $96, and then there's the sign that has to be posted, which is the $50.
$71, $140, $230, six bucks.
So, um, $224, that would be recommended to be waived.
Okay, that's something.
I guess the, the timing becomes an issue too, I assume. Uh, Ken, I guess, uh...
Timing is, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're coming into a season where you'd be running in, and for at least a month to get it on the agenda, advertising.
Well, I believe the process already started. What is it scheduled for?
Well, it's the, um, he's got a smittle deadline for this Wednesday, so I think it's going on the April 13th Planning Commission meeting. Our very next meeting.
Yep.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? And, and you know, I'm the one who brought up the whole fee. Do, do you, do you want to request your fee?
We have, uh, in writing, we requested our fee, yes.
Refund of the fee?
Saying we've already done all this stuff, so...
No, but I mean, do, do you specifically want to request that your fee be refunded? I'm the one who brought the issue up, when I asked you to clarify.
Okay, I hereby requested...
If you could kind of step up to the mic a little more.
I hereby request that our fee be refunded. And the only other comment I was gonna, this legal term of transfer and stuff that we were addressing a minute ago, from a, from our perspective, looking at the ordinance, it says sale or transfer, so just as a stupid layperson, I mean, it seemed obvious that we hadn't transferred anything, so I'm just throwing that back for a comment.
Well, i- i- if you didn't think you were doing anything, then why would you have to go through the work to go to an LLC? You obviously knew there's some benefit of going to a transfer.
Okay. Yeah.
Just to go back to the whole transfer issue once more, um, I guess the, uh, one of the specific, I guess the specific situation that came up that brought transfer into question was when you have, um, spouses that are owning a vacation home rental together, one of them dies, and then you have just one spouse left. Is that technically a transfer, or is that not, you don't, do you want to punish the person that's living for the fact that their spouse died, and all of a sudden now it just is in one person's name? I guess that was what initially brought about the idea of defining transfer. The fact that, um, Mr. Tomavik, that they chose to transfer it into an LLC's name, made it so that it is now the LLC that owns the vacation home rental, and forevermore, it's just the LLC. This means that any other owner, um, can basically come in and they can transfer whoever, uh, is the underlying, you know, manager, president of the LLC, however they want to go about that, without having to actually transfer, uh, the ownership for the vacation home rental, and I don't know if I'm being clear at all with that, but...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Laurie, yeah.
So I guess what you're saying is this transfer gives them more flexibility?
Yes, absolutely.
That's what you're trying to say.
Yes.
But by doing that, they went into violation.
Yeah, and it caused them to go into violation, but it, more or less, it made, I don't know, someone might want to say that it makes the LLC's ownership of the vacation home rental more marketable because it's now under an LLC's name rather than an individual's name, so...
Well, I think that's a good point, because like, when we were going through all the vacation home rentals, I mean, the big thing that, I think the Planning Commission and the committee that was in charge there wanted to confirm, you know, if there's ownership change and it's a shady character, that's now going to take over that property, and now you're saying with the LLC, once they're approved, there is no transfer. You could have people change underneath.
Precisely.
But the ownership hasn't changed.
Precisely.
And you've lost the control that we were seeking originally with the ordinance.
So to, I, one comment. Okay, so my purpose of doing this was to add Cory and my daughter and her, and her husband on it in case I die. It's that simple. I'm sure it's gonna happen one of these days. It's that simple.
I'll try something. Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we, um, we approve staff's recommendation for, um, continuing, approving the extension of CU 1319 with the 17 conditions, and, um, make a recommendation to the County Commission to refund the refundable portion of the Tomavix fees.
Just to clarify...
Separate motions, maybe.
Yeah, you can include that in your motion, but this item does not go to the County Commissioners. So Mr. Tomavik would personally have to be on their, get on their agenda.
Oh, I have to make a motion for that?
Well, no, you could include it in the condition.
Yeah, but don't, don't all of our recommendations...
Not, not the CUP.
Oh, the CUP ones don't, okay, okay. So then I would have to make a separate motion that recommends that this be forwarded to the County Commission for action? For refund, refund of funding fees?
Well, no, you can, you can put it in your motion, so then if Mr. Tomavik goes to County Commissioners and asks to have, to be appear in front of them to waive fees, then they can just take this, copy this motion from this meeting and say, right?
Is, is that the way that works?
I would make two separate ones just to keep it clean. First one for CUP 1319, then a separate one for the board, for the commission's recommendation.
Okay.
If the applicant wants to go and request a fee, I'd make...
Okay, so my initial motion should not even address anything related to the fees, just for continuation of the extension of the CUP?
Yeah, and then if you want to do the fees, I'd make a separate motion.
Okay, I'll just make that motion then, just for continuance of extension of the CUP 13-19 with 17 conditions. Point of clarification?
Yeah.
Laurie, did you intend also then to end the vacation home rental portion of the CUP?
Because it's almost addressed like two different...
Yeah, did you want that all to be part of one thing? I, I thought you said that the, the other one automatically ended anyway.
It is automatic, and this is...
Irregardless of any action we take, so I didn't think I needed to address that.
Nope.
It's gone, right?
Okay.
It's gone.
That's true.
It was, yeah.
That's, that was why I only, I don't know, okay.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
The paperwork clarification.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign. Motion carried. Now, you're gonna offer a second motion for the...
Sure. Um, so my second motion would be then that, um, a, a motion to, do I allow, or do I suggest, or do I request that...
Recommend.
Recommend that Mr. Tomavik appear with the County Commission to ask for refund of his fees?
And that we support that.
You can recommend that he appear, or maybe you just as a commission recommend that if he does appear, he would support the reimbursement.
Okay, all right. It's up to him, I guess, whether or not he wants to appear, okay? That is clear, is nothing.
I'll second that.
The motion is including support, the planning commission's support.
That as a whole, you guys will support it if he appears, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I second that, yes.
Motion and second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Both the same sign. Motion carried. Onto item 17, County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the March 9th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions for PJ on that? Items from the public. I think we just lost the public except for George, so...
Actually, not from the public, but, uh, looking forward, as a county government, uh, we, we hear various things, uh, in discussions, and this discussion of the PUD, uh, what I was hearing very clearly was oversight. And going forward, I don't, I don't think the government wants to get in the business of heavy oversight. The Deerfield Park deal has been going on since I've been here. It was brand new 28 years ago. years ago, and, and they've been quibbling and fighting and whatever ever since, and, and not that that's isolated, but I, I kept hearing in there that they want, they want us, the government, to settle our squabbles, and, and going forward, Commissioner Troutman and the rest of us have something to, to look at, should, should we be, should we be policing activities like that, and I, I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Nancy.
I, I know I'm not supposed to respond to this, but, but that is really something you should bring up before the commission, because that's a five-person Pennington County Commission decision, and probably we shouldn't be discussing here before we discuss before our commission.
Well, I understand and appreciate that, but these folks make recommendations, and, and certainly we don't, we don't and won't ever have all the answers, it's whatever those folks that represent us and, and these folks do, whatever they can contribute in a way of, of, this, this discussion needs to go on at, at some point in time.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Mr. Farabee, Commissioner Farabee, forgive me, but I do believe it is not here that the, the discussion starts, it needs to start at a County Commission level.
And, and one last comment, if, I don't know, they could make it a condition of a PUD to, to not police, but, but those conditions come from, from the staff and from you folks to us, and I appreciate that, it's, it's just something that, going forward, we need to look at, but, thank you much.
Thank you. Items from staff, PJ, you have anything further? Items from membership.
I would say officially, nothing further from staff.
Items from membership, early on in the agenda, I talked about possibly having some discussion on just, I think, given the time, and maybe save that for a different meeting as far as whether, I think we did have good discussion today, and it's, kind of goes counter to the argument of trying to limit time, and I think we had some pretty good discussion today, and I'd hate to limit some of the discussion we had, so, but, and probably a short meeting for some of the County Commissioners, but a long one for us, so.
Mr. Chair, I will miss the May eleventh meeting.
If nothing else, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, we're adjourned.